Second.
James Collins, this meeting is being taped and put on live TV, so please act accordingly. My other comment is, Bill, I'd like to just reiterate a comment you made at the last meeting about the CBD district.
The mic's not on.
I'm sorry. It was my fault. I didn't realize the mic was not on. The comment you made about the Central Business District in town, I just wanted to just state that, you know, there was a lot of people that were involved in that, and it was almost 10 years in the making, and people like Joe Scardino, Pam McCarthy, the downtown task force that we had, the previous boards of selectmen, previous planning boards, they were all people that were involved in getting that done, and even the town itself with all the input. So I think it's, as an honor, is to be able to thank everybody in town, because there was a lot to get at there, and I'm glad that we were able to get to the point we are, and if we have to make a minor tweak in it to meet up with the MBTA, I think that's, I think it's doable, and I just think the town ought to be educated on what that needs to happen, so we can make that happen.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I did mention, you know, we will be looking at, I'm just getting a confirmation on, you know, it's a very minor, minor change to some language, but, you know, kudos to everyone that was involved, because when we ran the numbers for the MBTA zoning, we more than comply. So it's, you know, it's just the restriction of bedrooms, that's all, it's a state requirement, so, to not restrict, so, but, and as you and I talked, we're not even using the core district. We meet it with flex and transition. If you add the core, it's, you know, we've done exponential what the state wanted us to do around train stations prior to them enacting the full rules. So, kudos to everyone involved.
Great. I just wanted to bring that up and let you know. Thank you. I want to take one item out of order. Item number three, we're going to bring up at this point in time. There has been a request by the applicant. Nicole, are you on?
I am, yes.
Did you want to speak about this at all?
Sure. I mean, just at this time, you know, I've been working with the applicant, talking to them about your requests for Reebok Drive, and I think they need a little more time to figure out, you know, all of the logistics of Reebok Drive and the easement, and they would like to respectfully withdraw their application at this time without prejudice to figure everything out, and then possibly refile at a later date.
Very good. Anybody on the board have any questions on that? Can I have a motion to accept their request for, I'll make it pull this without any prejudice and to bring it up at a later date. So made. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set, Nicole?
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
You're welcome.
Bye.
Item number one on the agenda, continued public hearing will be held, a petition to the applicant filed at Bill's Main Street, 460 Belmont Street, Brockton, Mass., represented by Datella, Burke, and Salsa Associates, 1266 Frontiers Brook Parkway Suite 401 Quincy, Mass., for site plan review under section 10.7 to convert the existing motel manager's building and existing single-family residence into 24 efficiency unit apartment complex. The applicant is requesting a waiver of section 4.1.2 Table of Dimensional Indensity Regulations to allow the existing four-foot side yard setback to remain, section 6.1.6 Table of Off-Street Parking, and section 6.1.7.19 to reduce the required parking from 24 space to 13 space, and to allow a two-way drive aisle to reduce from 24 feet to 20 feet. The project is located at 1919 Washington Street, assesses map 60, lot 15, and general business zoning district. I have a letter that I've written to the board that I'd like to bring into this meeting. I will read it. The reason I'm sending, doing this letter is to basically educate the board and educate the public on where we are and what this amendment means, and then how we're going to go forward. When I finish reading the letter, I'll ask the board for any questions or any clarifications they need. I'll also ask the public, and then we'll kind of get into the nuts and bolts of the hearing. Members of the Stoughton Planning Board, the Dover Amendment falls under section 40A of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' general laws, section 40A, and states as follows: No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall regulate or restrict the interior area of a single-family residential dwelling. No shall any such ordinance or bylaw prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use of land structures for religious purposes or for educational purposes on land owned or leased by the Commonwealth or any of its agencies, subdivisions, bodies, political, or by religious sect or denomination or by a nonprofit educational corporation, provided, however, that such land and/or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of the structures and determining yard sizes, lot areas, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements. Due to the fact that section 40A specifically deals with zoning, the initial determinations of any zoning questions are determined by the zoning officer in town. In this town is our building commissioner, Jack Erickson. I highly respect Mr. Erickson's opinions and fully understand how he made the determination that this organization falls under the nonprofit and educational section of the Dover Amendment. As an attachment to this letter, I have included his opinion letter. In that letter, you will see that he based his decision on what is stated in the father bill's articles of incorporation. He also stated that this proposal use is allowed, provide that the educational aspect of the Dover Amendment is enacted. However, when you review their mission statement and program outline for this type of housing, there was no mention of an educational component anywhere. I have included both attachments in this letter. I am not sure how we, as the planning board and the citizens of Stoughton, assure that the educational aspect is enacted if the applicant cannot provide documentation of what they will provide for education within its structure. Based on those facts, I disagree that this project, that this is a project that falls, that is for educational purpose. That being said, it is not in our purview as a planning board to debate and/or rule on their intent. However, I will request that any decision that this board renders will reference the same opinion as the commissioner and state that the decision of this board is based on the applicant's statement that they will provide educational aspect required by the Dover Amendment, and if found that the educational benefit is not being enacted by the applicant, then the decision of this board will be rescinded, and they will be violation of zoning. The area is zoned general business, and this is, and this use is not allowed under our zoning bylaws in general business. There are four zones, there are four items in zoning that are under our purview to review and rule on with the project before it is under the, before us, under the Dover Amendment. One is the Vulcan hiker structures, building height and gross floor area of buildings. Two is lot sizes, setbacks, and open space. Lot area, frontage of property, front and side yard setbacks, landscaping, open space percentage. Landscaping borders and fencing meet minimum requirements of site plan review. Parking, the number of parking spaces, the number of handicap parking spaces. If a reduction in the number of parking spaces is being sought by the applicant, they must be able to demonstrate the following: There is sufficient safe pedestrian ways for occupants to access the areas of the town. There is sufficient public transportation close by that can be used by the occupants. The applicants will provide private transportation, be provided, the applicants will provide private transportation, be provided, the occupants, if the other items are not met. Building coverage area requirements, lot area percentage, floor area ratio, gross floor area to ratio of buildings. The applicant is requesting the following waiver from our zoning bylaws. Side yard setback, this is an existing condition, and the applicant is proposing to use the same structure, therefore it would be unreasonable for this board not to grant this waiver. Reduction in parking, there needs to be a full understanding of the requirements that they are proposing. Item number three, waiver of drive aisle, this is an existing condition, and the applicant is proposing to use the same structure, therefore it would be unreasonable for this board to, not to grant this waiver. The application has gone through technical review and appears to be meeting all the requirements of this review, however, this must be updated tonight. Daniel Kelly, Stoughton Planning Board Chairman. I've read that and I've done that for educational for everybody here in the meeting, to the town, and for the board members, so if there's any questions about this, or how we're going to proceed forward from the board, please let me know at this point. Good. Anybody from the public would like to ask questions or speak about this at this point? Okay. Then I would like, at this point, the applicant to present his plans and his updated items per the technical review as we're going forward.
Thank you, Chairman. John Yazwinski from Father Bills of Main Spring, and I have Cameron Campbell here from DeSalle Burke, our engineer, who I'll turn it over to, to give us an update from last meeting about the changes and updates, and it's as we've been working with the city officials on. Thank you.
Okay. Great.
How's it going? My name's Cameron Campbell with DeSalle Burke Sala, one of the civil engineers on the project. So the major change, based on the last hearing, was we had a future parking area, which the board was not privy to, or did not agree with, and they asked that we construct the parking area and make it part of the plan. So we now have 25 parking spaces, which is one space per unit and an additional space for the employee. After a technical review, the building commissioner, we've been seeing this as a lodging house style structure, which requires one space per unit. The building commissioner in the town disagrees, and they believe it is a multifamily structure which would require two spaces per unit. So to meet the parking requirement, you would need 48 parking spaces on this site. We're asking for a waiver with 25 spaces instead of the 48, with the, with the knowledge that the applicant has done this type of project many times before, and approximately only 10% of their residents drive cars, which would equal out to about three of the residents out of the 24 driving. And the town staff has shown no objection to the proposal of the parking we have now, which is 25 spaces, which provides ample parking without overdoing and paving the entire rear yard of this property and pushing into the 100-foot buffer of the wetland area. We don't believe it's necessary to be able to support the use of this project to have 48 parking spaces. We think a lot of it would go unused. And then the other technical comments were based, specifically more technical comments on drainage. For Mr. Horstfall, the assistant town engineer, had specific questions regarding the drainage and specific standards that needed to be met, and we've answered all those. If you want me to run through them all, I can. People's eyes might glaze over if I decide to do it, but that's, the parking is the major change from the last hearing. There's been no other major changes, other than some drainage upgrades and a little bit of grading to meet the new drainage and the whatnot.
Okay. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
From a technical style, from an administrative point of view, or technical, do we need to have the application revised or re-upped, depending on how they?
I took a look at that, and it's like, the way we wrote it is, they requested a waiver of parking to section 6. whatever, so it was advertised generically. So the waiver to parking, you know, was advertised and for the special permit, so you can, you know, during the hearing process, you know, so it does not need to be re-advertised, because it was, it was already discussed, you know, that they wanted, their original waiver was a lot more. So do you want me to kind of go over some of our review? Okay, I'll go over mine.
Specific items that you need to, let's deal with that, yep.
Craig is online, so he can then go over his. As Cameron said, from a technical standpoint and a planning standpoint, I think Craig and I both think that the one space per, these are efficiency apartments, they're providing 25 spaces, we think that's sufficient. We don't want to see the entire backyard and getting into the buffer and increase impervious area, that's not necessary. You know, if for some reason it became necessary, and there was an issue, we could always bring them back, and, you know, if they needed to add parking, they could always add it, but we don't see a need to add that much impervious area. We think that it's kind of, it's sufficient, to be honest with you. I would love to change the parking requirements, but.
We can have that discussion.
That's a later date.
Something that needs to get done.
Yeah, and that's a later, that's a later discussion. That'll be in a couple of years, we'll work on. Mine are more technical, because they really were concentrating on the grading, the drainage, and the site. So some of the other plans, the landscape plan hasn't been revised to show the current site with the 25 spaces. In addition, they reference.
It has been, it has been updated or has not been?
It has not been, but they weren't proposing on, the screenings already, there's existing screening, so there's really no need for landscaping, and just that the, all of the plans need to be consistent with the proposed site layout. So their landscape plan does not have that 25 car parking, or the, it's not 20, whatever it is, the 12-car parking in the back. So just, they need to just make their plans consistent. They also referenced, the detail sheet was never submitted, so that needs to be submitted. The one thing that might change is the photometric plan doesn't have the 12 unit. However, if you're going to have a parking lot, you're going to need to light it, so I believe the photometric is going to change slightly, but they'll still be able to meet the half-foot candle at the property line and various things, but they just.
The plan should still be part of, the plan should still be part of the set that's coming to us. The photometric plan should still be part of the set that's coming to us.
Correct, and the existing photometric plan doesn't have the parking on it either.
My point, yeah, so it's got to be updated.
So that needs to be updated. And then the one thing, it's more of a pet peeve of mine, and since I'm the one that's the gatekeeper of the plans, they submitted the engineering plans, and then the landscape, architects submitted the landscape, and then the photometric was submitted. I have three separate sets of plans. They need to consolidate them all into one set. It's.
There should also be a blank page on that for the decision.
I already, I have that in the, in the, written, that they also need to include. So the final set, I'm thinking that they're going to need to make revisions to the thing. Their conservation, I believe, is next week, or it's coming up, so they really won't want to close this out until they get their conservation approval.
We wouldn't close it anyway until that's done.
Right, and so, but, so some of the, the stuff that we're looking at is, it's just very technical in nature. You know, I want all the plans consistent. We really need to see the final photometric. I think that's, is doable. And then I will let Craig go over some of the engineering is, is, you know, I'll let Craig go over that.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, so we did review the updated plans, and a lot of my technical review comments are sort of inherent with the type of storm onto management system that the applicant's proposing, which is a low-impact development, so they, they have, when you incorporate that, you end up with some shallow structures, you're not using deep catch basins and deep pipes. So they have some issues with, you know, cover over some pipes and getting the depth of freeboard around the existing basin, and they just didn't include that, and I think they can easily make a revision to incorporate that. And some of the other things that I have mentioned in my review letter are just some minor drafting items, so nothing overwhelming in my comment letter.
Thank you, Craig. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak at this time? Yes, sir. Come on up and state your name and address, please.
Juan Fox, 624 Pleasant Street. Will there be a fence that goes along the back of the property, along with the sides?
Which rip?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I just didn't know which, we was talking about.
The rear of the property by the stone wall, that, it's actually wetland back there, so we don't want to, you can't put a fence in it, and that's the issue with that. And not to mention, it's very wooded, so to clear an area to put a fence, it doesn't seem.
Okay.
And we, just so, we had a Butters meeting this past week, and one of the neighbors brought, brought that up, asked, for security reasons, and not for us, but in the past, there seems to be some traffic, maybe, in the past, people going into the woods and things, so they asked if they would, where would the fence be, and could there be a fence around the whole property? And we said we would absolutely be open to it, but we did say, we're not sure along the conservation side of it, of course, so there is, maybe you can, we do have a fence on both sides, though, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. For the record, Mark Zemanian, Five Low Avenue. I actually attended that Butters meeting. Main Spring was gracious enough to have any of the town members there. One thing that came up, and I want to precursor this by acknowledging the difficulty this may in fact be, but one of the, or a number of the Butters had real concern about people walking on that road, on the 138 Road. And although all parties, including Main Spring, realized it may be difficult to do so, the discussion of perhaps Main Spring putting in a sidewalk up to Roach Brothers came up. Now, Main Spring at that Butters meeting said they'd be happy to entertain that. I'm not asking you to make it a condition of this, but is that something we can look into and talk about? I do know it's a state.
It's definitely something we can talk about, because there's something we've discussed the last couple of meetings about the safety of where the residents are going to go, so I'm very open to talking about that.
And I don't expect an answer tonight, but maybe through you to the town planner, is this something that could be done privately? And I'm not asking for an answer right now, Bill, so don't misunderstand me, but is that, could that be looked into, I guess is what I'm getting at?
Well, Mark, anything can be looked into. I really would like Craig to chime in, because sidewalks are more complicated than everyone thinks.
I absolutely understand.
The problem with them, and I'm sure Mr. Murphy has heard me say this numerous times, is that, you know, it's just not laying, throwing down a little bit of, four feet of asphalt, because there's, there's, you know, believe it or not, in the town of Stoughton, residents put structures within the right-of-way, you know, and encroach, they don't realize that, that their property doesn't go to the edge of the pavement, it's usually anywhere from five to 15 feet back before their property starts, and they have their landscaping and their irrigation. We find all sorts of things in the right-of-way.
Absolutely.
And then the other thing is, there's a fair amount of, you know, grading and drainage, drainage is the biggest issue.
Yes, it is.
So, but Craig, if you can kind of chime in on that.
Sure, absolutely. You know, along these, these right-of-ways, you know, the drainage does become an issue, you know, when we're putting in the sidewalks, we have to put some sort of curbing and elevate the grade adjacent to the roadway. And then in this area, you'd have to really take a hard look at what's going on with the drainage structures along the roadway, if they're in the right spots, and if we're, you know, a lot of times there'll be paved swales and things, I think, down in this area, that just carry the water off the edge of the road and into the adjacent land, so that can pose an issue. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it definitely takes, it's a little bit more complicated than, like Bill said, just laying down, you know, a four-foot-wide bit conch walkway. And to boot, it's, it's a state highway, so the state would have to chime in as well.
Craig, I do understand what you're saying, however, I, I think from a planning point of view, I think it's actually a really good point to be able to at least take a look at, and maybe see what we can get to get it done, because.
I agree.
The reason we have, you know, the, the sides of the roadways is to be able to do this, so if we have the easement to do it, let's see if we can at least try something. Yes?
Yeah, I'm 100% for a sidewalk in this area, if it can be done. I'm never opposed to seeing, you know, sidewalk for pedestrians.
Thank you, Chairman.
And it can be done, you know, privately. The select board, as the road commissioners, could approve, you know, them to do it, but it's also a masti OT approval, too.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to be clear that when the, when the neighbors and us were talking about the need, of course, not just if our project is there, but just the need for that side of the community in the town to have a sidewalk, Father Bills at Main Spring's statement in conversation was, as if we're part of the community in this neighborhood, we would absolutely, with them, advocate and support a sidewalk for this, just to be clear. And we, we've worked with another community on this and have built it in and advocated for it also. Thank you.
Advocation in building doesn't call, doesn't give up a dollar signs, I'm not hearing that you're going to pay for it. Anybody else have anything to say?
Okay. Anybody from the board have any questions?
She's coming up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. My phone.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Charlene Terry Booker. My father, Joseph Terry, lives across the street. I was at the meeting, it was a good, very useful meeting, but what I wanted to say that the residents that are currently there, they don't typically walk to Roach Brothers. Everyone there has cars and transportation, no one's really, residents are walking up and down the street. I mean, it would be useful to have sidewalks, but I think because of the residents that are going to be there, that are not really going to have any transportation, they're, you know, more opt, to walk to the CVS or Roach Brothers if they need something. So I think it's a real public safety issue. I know, you know, everyone thinks it's a good idea, but there's going to be more of a need because of this site, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Anybody else in the public have anything? Anybody on the board, I know, PDU or something?
Yeah, actually, a couple of comments. First thing is, during last week, I did take a ride down to this property, go out of my car, and I did walk down the property. Very, very nice piece of property that you have there. I can see why you want this piece of property. One of the questions that came up is, I noticed there's an electronic gate at the, that leads to the back of the property, and I was, it was closed. Now, is that gate going to remain there? And the reason I ask that question, now you're restricting access to the additional parking spots that you'll be talking out back.
Yeah, the gate is going to be removed. It's, that whole driveway going up is completely redone.
Okay, no, I just like, I saw the gate, it was locked, and I can understand why. You know, and it's like, okay, and then the other, the other thing I observed, you have a two-car garage there, and is that going to continue to be a garage, or cars being parked in front of the garage?
It's continued to be a garage. It's counted as two of the spaces on this plan.
Okay, so you're counting the two spaces in front of the garage?
In the garage, not in front.
Inside the garage?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and then the, the other question I'm going to touch upon lightly, because this meeting would never end, is sidewalks, right? I have very large knowledge of what it takes to get sidewalks. I can't go on any further. Good luck.
Anybody else have any comments?
Do you have any, like, plans for like a public van, or a van that you will transport people to, say, like, once every day at 10 o'clock, they give a ride to Roach Brothers or some other, or even with the public transportation? Do you have any incorporation in that?
Yeah, we, with properties that don't have public transportation, we build in times during the week, like, you know, Roach Brothers visit will be, you know, this, this night, everybody, and we will bring a van down. We have vans in our, in our agency, it won't be parked there, but we'll bring it down from. from Father Bill's and Main Spring. And our case managers, full-time, that are there, are there to transport people to all their appointments and all of that. And we'll be leveraging also, many of our individuals will be able to leverage other community van services, if it's veterans or elders and things, that we'll do to make sure that they get there. We build into our budget, even, you know, now with Uber and those type of things, to make sure that if somebody has trouble getting to a medical point, this or that, we have it. So our program services builds that in to help them.
Is there any public transportation that goes down that route?
Does not.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Does the board have any objections or requests as far as the reduction from parking from 48 to with the 25 spaces at this point in time?
No.
I'm glad they put it in there.
The only question I have now that actually came up is they're counting two of the spots inside the garage. So it was.
That doesn't, I don't think that's a.
Is that?
I mean, they can control, all they do is control and access to two spaces.
Okay.
I don't think it's a big deal.
I guess they have a lottery who gets the garage for the winter.
At this point in time, you're going to have to finish up your drawings, and you're going to get Concom approval. So I'm assuming you're going to ask for a continuance.
Yes, thank you.
That would, that would be to December 14th is the next meeting. How quickly can you get the drawings? Probably need to be turned around to us by the 21st.
So the drawings are essentially done, and the comment letter response is essentially done, we're just waiting on the photometric line to get finished.
Okay.
And when is Concom coming?
It's next Thursday. So.
We'll set it for 14th, if everything is in place. If not, we'll just have to extend it out beyond another next date.
And I will look at drafting, a draft findings and recommendations for you for that meeting. If the board so chooses.
Are you okay with that? Okay.
Yeah, well, the, the letter from the chairman B is part of that in the conditions?
The conditions in my letter will.
Yeah, yes.
Conditions, yes.
Yes, I will look at, I will look at crafting a condition regarding the use.
Okay. Very good. So can I have a motion to continue to December 14th?
So may.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you on December 14th.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item number four on the agenda. A new public hearing will be held at the petition of the applicant, the petition of the applicant and owner, VFW Bruce Wood LLC, 540 VFW Parkway, Suite 3, West Roxbury, Mass. 02132, represented by attorney Barry R. Crimmins, 909 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072, for definitive subdivision approval under MGL Chapter 41, Section 81-K-81-GG, and the Stoughton Land Subdivision Regulation of February 17, 1999. The proposal is to create an 18-lot residential subdivision with related infrastructure. Waivers have been requested to Section 4, Procedures for Submission and Approval of Plans in Section 6, Design and Construction Standards. The property is located at Zero Eagle Rock Road, assesses map Lot 8, Lot 16 and 17, and residential ARA zoning district. Would the applicant and/or his representatives be here and explain themselves, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, attorney Barry R. Crimmins of 909 Washington Street in Stoughton, here on behalf of the applicant. We have several folks here tonight with me that I would like to introduce. To my immediate right is Mr. Dmitri Baskin, who is the principal with VFW Bruce Wood LLC. To Dmitri's right is Mr. Kevin Deibler, who is our project architect with Rhodey Architects. And to my left is Mr. Michael Novak, who is our project engineer. If I may, Mr. Chairman, let me give a brief overview, and then I'd like to turn it over to the folks up here at the table with me. And would like to take things in perhaps a slightly different order than we might typically do. This is a very, what we consider a very unique project, both in terms of the site itself, but also in terms of the homes to be constructed on this site. As was read in the public hearing notice, the proposed subdivision is an 18-lot subdivision located off of Eagle Rock Road, at the intersection of Eagle Rock Road and Phoenix Lane, when you come in from Bay Road on the, on the Stoughton Eastern Line. And the planned construction is for what I refer to as passive homes, which Dmitri has received critical acclaim and awards in other areas for this type of construction. What I'd like to do, if we may, Mr. Chairman, is I'd like to give first Kevin an opportunity to talk a little bit about the site, but also the construction, and how this construction lends itself to some of the natural characteristics of the site. And then we'll turn it over to Michael to talk about some of the more mundane matters having to do with the road construction, and the lots, and the drainage, and all of those fun things. So if I may, if I could sort of pass the gavel over to Kevin, and we have a present, a brief presentation that you'll be able to follow on the screen. But with that, Kevin?
Thank you, Barry. Again, Kevin Deibler, Rhodey Architects. Okay. How's that? Kevin Deibler, Rhodey Architects. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. What we would like to do in this very brief presentation is describe the team that has worked together several times over the last 15 years together. And most recently, as mentioned, we've delivered the first certified passive house buildings in the city of Boston, single-family residential buildings. We'll describe a little bit more about that system. But again, we have worked together in the past, and excited to look at a new opportunity to develop these special types of homes in this community. If you go through this, we have. Yeah, you can go two slides. Our approach to the site. This site right now exists off of Eagle Rock, has its own kind of unique characteristics that lend itself well to this type of construction. So the natural environment that we see here has been studied, and our engineer, Mike, will discuss the process for the types of road improvements that would be done to make this development possible. We can come back to this, these are some of the natural features on the site, which we will preserve and work with through the, through the process. If you keep going, in this site plan, the process for actually laying out and finding buildable lots here consists of making the roadway work and locating lots that comply with a minimum lot size. We've also been able to identify locations of ledge, buffer zones around wetlands, and really identify where these buildable zones are in the property. And there actually turns out to be three specific types of sites, which end up informing the design of the buildings and the layout of the, of the homes, as well as the accessways to those homes. Next slide, please. As mentioned, the different colors, and you'll see this again, how this amounts to three different types of homes, that we sort of work into three different house types, flat, split, and stacked. And due to the area and some of the topography, and the challenges that some of the topography creates, we've come up with designs that sort of work with that natural setting. And next slide, please. This is really our introduction to the Bruce Wood Homes, which were recently completed in 2022. And the next slide shows really the images, as mentioned, the first certified passive house projects in the city of Boston. That is a system, again, the first time that this, this type of house was delivered in the city. And through the process of kind of delivering these, we'll come back to the sort of, I guess, the attention that they've received, being, being unique, being also celebrated by the occupants that live there, because of the air quality and the reduction of energy consumption in a, in a single-family home, their energy bills are actually negative. So they consume less energy than they use. Next slide, please. This is really more of a technical drawing about describing what a passive home is. It looks a little bit like the same kind of house that you would, you know, coming up to it, but inside is a highly technical and high-quality construction process that eliminates thermal connections through the envelope of the building, extremely thick insulation. It's a process of certifying that the structure is actually air-sealed, so that there is very little energy loss through the envelope of the building. All of the products that are created actually become modeled in a computer energy model before construction started. That's what the certification of the passive house process involves. And that way, the occupants, and I guess, enjoy a really high level of air quality, which is becoming more and more important. It also sort of takes advantage of radiant heat gained through windows, so that the air and the, again, radiant energy that comes through windows can be absorbed up by the inside, thus also reducing the amount of energy that has to be created to create cooling and heating. The bottom of this is actually flat, and we'll show you a detail a little bit later. This house doesn't rely on frost walls that have to be dug below four feet. Actually, it becomes insulated on a pad and concrete, sort of a slab-on-grade rest on top of insulation. So the amount of excavation for these types of homes is drastically reduced to almost zero on many of these sites. Certainly in some of the areas, we will need to do some excavation to get these home footprints to work. But within, inside the building is also a very small mechanical system, so the kinds of energy that you need to run, the heating and cooling, is drastically reduced. We can probably talk even more about this, but I'll move on. For our approach for the Eagle Rock site, next slide goes to sort of introduce the sort of three different types of homes that sort of work themselves out due to the lot configuration, the topography, and access. Those three homes, if you go to the next slide, start to look in this way. One, one home model is a flat, and we're calling this the valley or the flat house. That is for residential buyers who prefer a single-floor home. The other homes also were designed in a way to kind of minimize the footprint on certain sites that have a steeper topography and slope. So that becomes a ridge house or a more of a compact footprint. The final one is the cascade, or the split that we call it. That one mitigates a different, you know, kind of slope on the site. So each one of these homes is designed in order to minimize its impact on the, on the natural environment. Next slide. This is what that aerial plan looks like. Again, all of the footprints and working onto compliant lots, avoiding buffer zones, as well as being positioned and oriented towards north and south in a way that will maximize the amount of benefit that you, that you get from the orientation, where solar can be, et cetera. Another, another key aspect to this development is the preservation of the tree canopy. So a lot of concerns about, you know, the kind of vegetation that would have to be removed here. We could, we would actually want to not remove as many trees as possible, so that the shade that's created also reduces the sort of cooling and heating load at the optimal times of the year. We're really anxious to sort of, or, you know, build on top of the experience that we've had at Bruce Wood. And this is, would be one of the first kinds of, scale of passive home community in the country to be building at this scale. These are also built on spec, so that we've identified that there is a market for this type of home. And it's actually rare to find in the, in the market, but we found that when we built these and delivered these in, in Boston. If you go to the next slide, this is something that's important to talk about, how we insulate below. It's essentially like a cooler, or like a styrofoam cooler, that sort of sits on, you know, and kind of, kind of wraps the entire envelope, that keeps the ice cold on the inside. This actually sits on top of the, you know, compacted fill or sand or gravel. And then a heavy slab-on-grade is created. So it's actually uses less concrete than a typical home. And in this project, we're trying to find ways to really reduce the actual carbon impact that construction creates. So anywhere where we can eliminate concrete, we will do that, and thus sort of amplifying the benefits of this type of construction. The last slide just really shows how the renderings of the, the types of homes that we would create. We work very closely with realtors to make sure that these are relevant to the market and appeal to buyers. But again, we are finding a rare part of the market. There's not a lot of these homes being built on spec at this point. And we're here tonight, and we'll hand it over to Mike to talk a little bit about the civil engineering.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike Novak from Patriot Engineering. And while these plans pull up, I'm going to turn so I can hopefully talk and make sense at the same time at the visuals. So as we stated, we're here for the proposed subdivision in Eagle Rock. If you could just kind of flip through. This is a, oops, sorry. The overview of the entire property. Plan north is sort of almost straight up. The Eagle Rock and Phoenix Lane's intersection is to the south-southeast. Approximately just shy of 28 acres. We have some resource areas within and bordering the property. As you can see, they're, they're shown sort of to the, to the, yeah, right there, to the, to the east, to the southeast as well. That's a bordering wetland. We have a few internal wetlands as well. And then on the west side, there's also another, there's a small wetland there, yes, and then an even smaller one to the, to the west of that, right next to that ledge. And then on the western property line, just off of the, off of the property, there's another wetland line. We did go through the Anrad process with conservation, so these are all approved lines as far as conservation is concerned. So we know where those are, and we established those buffers, which is why you saw the houses placed as they were. So we're very confident that those are outside of buffers. If we could flip to the next couple of them. So this is just, we'll quickly go through these, this is just a blow up with some topo. Again, the intersection is to the south-southeast of Phoenix and Eagle Rock. You can see the small, isolated wetlands, which we're actually splitting the road through. And then you can see that the, the site slopes, you know, east to west, pretty consistently throughout the, throughout the property. If you could just, next, again, this is like a blow up, we've just moved to the, to the east a little bit more. You can see that bordering wetland that runs top to bottom of page along there. Those were all flagged and located and approved. And then one more. And then one more, I believe, yeah, and that's just the rest of it coming back around, and that internal, that wetland that is bordering our site and the adjacent site. There's another small flags to the east of here, well offsite, just throws a little bit of buffer onto the site. But again, we tried to capture as much as we could. Next slide, please. This is just an overview of the lot. We can actually come back to this one. This one's a little out of place, but this is just erosion control and some sediment basins that we're going to try to work with for grading purposes, but that's probably something we could touch on a little later. You could flip to the next one, please. This is the lotting plan, just the geometric layout of the lots, 18 lots with a roadway that loops around on itself, approximately 2,671, 72 linear feet of roadway. 18 lots all comply with zoning. Next, if you could. This is just some details going through where we're going to be creating some easements. Again, we could bypass stormwater. Happy to touch on that later once we have a better overview. So if we could just flip through a couple of these. And this is just the geometric work for the lots to prove that they're in, they are complying with area frontage, along with the roadway math. One more, please, I think. Actually, two more. One more after this. So here we have some more of the detailed stormwater and grading. There are profile sheets after this, too, so you can get a feel for how the road undulates. But again, we're going to start with a high point at Phoenix and Eagle Rock, bring it down to a set of catch basins, and then start capturing. And to the northeast, you can see the outline and a test pit at the very top of the page. That's where one of the main infiltration systems is. We're using typical Coltech Stormsec tech plastic chambers, creating and capturing as much impervious, or all the impervious from the roadway as we can, getting it down and infiltrating. We have conducted witnessed soil testing for drainage within that area and the other area that we're proposing, so those are, have been witnessed and are included in the end of this plan set. And you can see as you work down the roadway, you can see some bypass pipes. We're taking what is currently flowing from top to bottom, or from east to west as we look at this, and just bringing that water through and letting it continue down its natural path. Anywhere that's not passing impervious, we're letting it flow, and any impervious is being captured through a roadway system of catch basins and manholes. If you could. And again, same concept flipping, going around the loop. Excuse me. You can see the internal loop on the west side has a sort of a detention, you know, a basin, just a slight depression, just to kind of bring all the water to one spot and slow it down and bring it through down to the wetland, to the west. And as we come around, you can see that right there where the cursor is, there's another small infiltration system, just to capture the, couldn't quite get everything around to the big one. Again, witness testing in that area shows that we have the soil capability to do that. And then we also have, just on the bottom of the page, you can see that there's an easement there. That's actually an access for some mitigation, wetland mitigation and plantings. It's going to be done as part of the, some slight filling of that very small wetland member at the front. We're going to fill that to allow the lot to function, and then we're going to replicate. I think we're at least two to one. We might be stronger. But that's just an access path to get that work done. If we could go...
How much land are you replicating?
I don't have the exact area. It might be on the plan. I just can't see it at this scale, but it's part of the conservation package, and it's a very small area. So we're more than two to one. We might even be pushing three to one in terms of replication area.
What kind of slope do you have on that road over there?
Memory, I'm not exactly sure, so I'm going to have to look. We obviously tried to stay within every required slope for that, but I don't think we're going to be able to see a profile on that scale. And I'm going to not lie to you, I don't think I'm going to be able to see it, because my eyes are starting to go.
I think the maximum slope that, Mr. Chairman, the maximum slope on the profile sheets is around 7%.
That sounds right. I wanted to say it was under eight, but I didn't want to say it without checking. Anywhere we could flatten out, we did. A lot of the beginning part of the road is well under that. It's just in that loop area where we come up to a high point is where we have to get to, get to those steeper slopes. If we could flip to, I think there might be one more worth looking at, again, just finishing off the roadway. Those are the profiles. Again, they're going to be a little hard to see, but hopefully you have access to be able to see those at a better scale. But the whole roadway has been profiled. The drainage system is also profiled as well to show that we can, we can get everything to where it needs to go. If we could flip through these, I'm not sure if there's much more to touch on, and it might just be worth starting questions at this point. Yeah, we'll just need the details at that point. The soil testing, I can't say, is, I think, on the last sheet. And over the last week or so, we also, just a quick point of reference, is we did actually do Board of Health witness testing for septic as well, and we're able to find a very good area for soils to, that would certainly support a community system at the least.
I was going to say, what were you doing with septic, because there's got to be a lot of rock up there.
Yeah, well, actually, if we could come back a couple plans, I'll say when. Oh, actually, yes, I'm sorry, we did create one. I don't know, but actually, but this is good for now. So the top of that sheet here, to the right of the infiltration system or northeast, right in that, those two lot areas, we conducted four, so then we were, excuse me, I believe we got down to over 100 inches of naturally occurring material. So we, and we had, the worst perk rate was eight minutes an inch.
How much?
Eight. So we actually found some good stuff, so, which also will help keep the system relatively decent size. So we should be able to fit that without any issues. Sorry, my voice is, I'm going to turn this over for a second. Here to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Bill, maybe if you could put up the colored slide from Roddy's presentation. And the one thing I wanted to point out on, when we get to that, that Kevin touched on is, on, from the, colored of the overview of the subdivision. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. That one there. Bill, thank you. And Kevin, maybe you could just touch on, we showed the different style homes and the reason for those styles. That plan is color-coded to coordinate with, and you can see in the upper left-hand corner, based on the relative topography of those lots, that's why those lots are color-coded to indicate what type of home is intended to be constructed on each lot. You just want to touch on that briefly?
Sure. So each one of these, the yellow are the sites that have the greatest amount of topography and slope to them, so that the design of those homes have a smaller footprint, two stories, more of a stacked floor plan. The green ones are much more of a longer, more buildable, or more areas that aren't sort of impacted by setbacks, et cetera. But they also have slopes, and those are the ones where we call that a split, and that's where the levels are, they are split, sort of half-levels down. There are portions that are two stories, but it really kind of like terraces the home plan. And the blue ones are the flat, the flattest sites. And again, where we find a need in the market for single-floor homes, people who want a large home of four to five bedrooms, and all on one level. So that's a age-in-place type of way of designing. But we also talk about this because of the, again, site-specific kinds of home development. And we really want to contrast this from maybe custom home building that eradicates all trees and creates big lawns. That is really not the approach here. It's about saving the trees, making sure that that tree cover is there to allow the systems to work and for these to be passive homes. These will appeal to people that want to live that way and also understand their carbon footprint as they live in these places. So I hope that explains the color coding and the process we went through.
Great. Thanks, Kevin. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I think gives you folks and hopefully the folks who are here a pretty good idea of what it is that we're proposing. And again, somewhat of a unique design, certainly, certainly something that really hasn't been seen in this area previously, and something we think that the town can really be proud of and point to as really cutting-edge design. I would just like to reiterate what Kevin alluded to, which is we're maintaining as much of the canopy as possible, really just clearing enough to locate the homes. And again, the homes are designed to be built without basements, so we're utilizing the natural topography and natural resources that are already out there. And with that, I think we'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, and see if you and your members have any questions that we can respond to.
Bill, do you have any comments at this point in time, or just Craig?
I'm going to let Craig kind of talk first.
Go ahead, Craig.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. You know, I really do think this is a unique subdivision, and it's, I'm pretty excited about the innovation that's being incorporated into the home design. And the plans that were submitted were fairly detailed for the roadway construction and the stormwater. But in our, you know, first look at it, you know, there were no provisions provided for water and sewer, which are, you know, as you know, key components to having a residential development. There was a mention of the installation of a dry waterline being installed, probably for a future connection to a water service, but, you know, the lack of any type of septic perk test done or things like that in the plans that were submitted were really of concern. That coupled along with the topography of the site, really just, you know, got Bill and I to a point where, you know, we needed more information before we could, you know, dive in to review this set. So, you know, I think we've, it's a good idea to have them come before the board so that they can, you know, give the general presentation, and hopefully from this point, you know, even the plan that we have seen tonight, the applicant has, you know, done some soil testing. For now, we know it's going to be a community septic system, so that's a shared septic system amongst all the homes on the site, which, you know, needs to include a lot more detail as far as the collection. So we're bringing all the effluent from the homes to one central location, so now we need to have a collection system, or is it low-pressure pumping? There's other, other things that need to be answered before we take a deep dive into, you know, all the nuts and bolts of this project. You know, one other thing I'd like to point out is that, you know, and I appreciate the different floor plans and, you know, the split levels and things that do account for topography, but there was a plan shown earlier that had, you know, it showed the house lot layout, and the houses on the lots. And a couple of them are located in areas where they're proposing the stormwater infiltration basin, and now the community septic field. So, you know, those things, not saying that they can't be done, but they all need to be looked at, and, you know, we need to have more information on the design of that septic system before we can really dig into the rest of it.
Thank you, Craig. Bill?
Thank you.
No, the basic planning requirements, you know, they can meet those. The slopes of the road and the fire chief has looked at it, and he's, doesn't have an issue with the length of the road from, you know, the cul-de-sac requirement, and he also, the narrower width that they're proposing, so he didn't have a problem with it. I think this really revolves, this is a detailed engineering exercise, is what it really revolves around. You know, they can meet the lot area frontage, those sorts of things. I will let you know that in my, almost, golly, it's almost 30-year career now, I am leery of community septic systems and other things, because, and here's just the plain fact, you know, every time a developer comes in and wants to develop a private road, every private road will eventually, once they're gone, be requested to be accepted by the residents at town meeting. That, that's happened at every community I've worked for. The homeowners association, you know, these are going to be expensive homes, I understand that, but, you know, the maintenance requirement for, you know, a community septic system, you know, package, essentially a package treatment plant, you know, when we're all gone is, you know, the, it, the future planners and planning board are potentially can inherit a problem, because once it does need to, you know, get fixed, obviously, you know, they have to have a whole reserve area the size of their existing area so they could build another one. Well, these things, you know, you've got, I don't know, six, seven, 18 residents that are then going to have to cough up hundreds of thousands of dollars each to get something like that. The other thing is, you know, the stormwater system, you know, they're proposing the Coltech chambers. Well, that requires, you know, a certain amount of maintenance, so I would recommend that, you know, that the town not accept this road, because we are not geared towards maintaining, you know, Coltechs and underground systems. You know, the main culprit that you see is, you know, in our operations and maintenance plans on the commercial buildings, is they have to do those street sweepers, you know, sweeping up the sand that's put down during the winter and those sorts of things. You know, there's a whole host of engineering, and I'm kind of getting into a lot of Craig's issues, but the issues that I've seen inherited in other communities that I've worked in that propose these, and then it's just like, oh, you know, they're going to get clogged, they're going to have to be maintained, they're going to have, you know, there's this, you know, you know...
There's a lifetime to them.
There's a lifetime to them, and, you know, there's a reason we have some of our regulations that require the ponds. Some people call them the mosquito ponds and those sorts of things, is because we have weed whackers, we have individuals that can run weed whackers and lawn mowers, not, you know, Vector trucks and these sorts of things. So whenever I see a subdivision with these innovative technologies, which, you know, I'm all for it, I think it's a unique subdivision, it's kind of exciting to see some of this come through, it's some of the nuts and bolts, you know, I'm very leery of, because we're not, as a community, if we, we can't accept this road as a public road, because we're not, we can't maintain Coltechs. We're not in the business of doing it, you know? So that kind of sets the stage, you know?
Thank you. Anybody from the board have any questions?
I was wondering, you didn't really get into how the heating and system was. Were you going to be using geothermal?
No, these just use pretty efficient, just heat pumps that move air, actually recirculate the conditioned air with fresh air in it. So it's an energy recovery unit as well. So they're all electric. There's no fossil fuel consumption in the heating and cooling.
So it's all electric?
Correct.
It indirectly uses fossil fuels, but...
Well, depending on where you get your power, but there's more sources of green, green power now.
Well, in colder weather, cold snaps, 20 degrees and lower, heat pumps sometimes don't do the trick. You need a secondary heating system. Is this insulation, the way this is built, does that eliminate that problem?
Yes. It, I mean, anything that is, you know... Yes, it, I mean, anything that is, you know, the power shut out for many, many weeks, it's like, there's really nothing that can, you know, solve for that, that emergency kind of issue, but in the sort of points where we get to those, like, string of five or six days that's below 20 or 10, these, you know, there's occupants inside the home, and actually, body heat or lighting generates heat that gets, you know, stored inside the homes. And we have, you know, the computer models that you run on this before you even start building, prove how, how many windows you need to kind of, again, bring in natural light to absorb the natural radiant heat. The insulation itself exceeds code, and it gets up to a point where it's really, you know, the, the amount of insulation plus the sort of robust air sealing and the proving it through blower door tests at different times, so this is really, you know, performs very well, and that's why, from a resiliency standpoint, these are becoming more and more popular types of homes.
Okay. Any questions, Paul?
Yeah. The, you have all the south-facing windows and stuff like that, so I would expect that there'd be selective clearing of pine trees and certain canopies opened up, et cetera, so that they get the full effect of that south face. So, you, on each individual lot, I would suspect that you have someone fully trained on what the selection of trees that would be removed, and, you know, is that part of your program there, when you create each site and site each house?
Yeah, there is, we've already been out to the site, you know, there, there are additional consultants that, that help us design these homes. We're architects that do drawings, and we help, Dimitri's a builder as well as an owner and developer. So, having gone through that process and seeing, like, why we even save trees on our City of Boston property, helps create shade in the summer, and when they lose their leaves, it allows the sun, you don't have to remove a tree to get, you know, a tree in the winter has very little shade.
If it's surrounded with, like, a pine canopy, obviously, you can't leave that.
There's very little, you know, coniferous, you know, growth in this, in this area, so we brought our, the instrument and our consultant out to take measurements of, of each lot, understanding, it's essentially a sundial, but it makes sure that it's, it's, understand the coordinates of where you are, that gets worked into the model, and we don't have to remove trees to make the houses work. We actually want to save them, but when the footprints of the house do create a clearing, that, that is also factored into the model. And we're learning more and more about this as, as we go.
So, I would imagine also your entryways, et cetera, designed into there, because you have houses facing, you know, the...
Yes.
South side, so to speak.
A few more slides down shows the orientation of the homes in this, this one right here. You can see that they all kind of have a similar orientation. This, north is sort of, I guess, to the right, top right, and the south is toward top, you know, bottom left, so anywhere we can, you know, again, have larger openings and living spaces on the south, that's where a lot of the light can come, come in here, and I think that...
So, how would you describe this canopy? Is it a mature forest, or initial, I mean, is it like, I haven't seen the site, so I'm not sure what level it's at, you know?
I think the, the amount of ledge that's there is, is typical of a lot of different sites and, and around Massachusetts, so therefore, like, gigantic trees haven't sprouted up here. There, seems like the calipers in anywhere between, you know, eight to 10 to 12 inches, they, they get pretty big, and those are hard to remove, so we won't remove them if they don't have to be.
So, is canopy like 80 to 100 feet tall with oaks and pines, and...
I would say very heavy in oak poplar as well. The, it's, it is very deciduous, and it changes quite rapidly, or drastically at different seasons, and we've visited in the winter, and the spring, and the summer. We've had a very, obviously, wet year this past year, so it is very dense right now, so we, again, with the computer models, understand how to model that, that's why we went out with the instruments during a sort of like peak summer condition.
Now, do you also have covenants that restrict detail as to what type of landscaping people can do or maintain around their houses, for amount of grassy area, how much, you know, has to be naturalized, et cetera?
And that may be to Bill's concerns and questions about a community, I mean, this is a, its own community, so maintenance of things like that will be ironed out as the homeowner's agreement is created. But, you know, we're here tonight to listen to the concerns and to listen to what, what kinds of issues are, are raised when we present something like, like this. Dimitri's willing to kind of look at these things and, and add sort of expense and complexity to the project, and, and work that out in a, in a manner that, you know, still makes sense from a market standpoint. So, while there are concerns about lifetime of things, we, we think this is a right way to approach this, this kind of development, not, not impact your, your town as much through this development, and sort of, you know, work through the issues on our site. I don't know if that makes, you know...
Okay. I think that's about it, yeah.
So, did I hear you say that these are typically three- to four-bedroom homes?
We have one model, the flat house has essentially four, thank you, Mike, four bedrooms plus a den and other, other features, that's the largest that they get to. One of the models goes to three bedrooms, but they also still have additional amenities like that, so...
A study or a home office, something of that nature.
Correct.
Right, on the, will these homes probably have solar panels?
Yes, this is a part of the, you know, agreement with homeowners, that they, they buy the house ready for solar, and they will always put them in. It's just a matter of how they source them, how they're installed, but once you get to the point of such minimal energy use, the adding solar starts to, you know, reverse the sort of life cycle cost, and on the homes in, in the City of Boston, there's actually negative energy bills, which they can transfer to other, other people that, that need that reduction.
Okay. One of the things I've picked up on, correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like you have sidewalks on both sides that are approximately five feet wide on each side? Am I reading that drawing correctly?
Yeah, I believe that's correct. We've, we tried to lay it out as close to we could to your, your requirements for your town requirements.
Okay, I was glad to see that. So, on these homes, will this end up being like a homeowners association to cover the whole group of homes, so issues that was brought up as far as like septic, you know, failure in septic, the whole association would take care of that? They would be responsible for that?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I only have just one question, more of a technical question, is the foundation, how do you deal with the building code without having to go four feet? When is there, do you, have you got a provision around that, or how does that work?
Well, that's, it's actually in the code as a force protective shallow foundation system, it's just in the...
Okay, are you, okay. So, you're using that shallow foundation system?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
We just, most people just don't use it, but that's kind of our side D.
It's due to the fact that we've, we've been working with others around the country that have used this, developed these homes, the kind of compressible insulation and foam that is out there, you just have to look for it, and it's in a, a part of the code that not many builders are, are using right now. It's, tends to be just easier and faster on, on other sites to go four feet down and, and put that, but the ones that we did in West Roxbury really require hardly any deep excavation, you know, it's just really flattening and compressing the...
What street were they on in West Roxbury?
Bruce Wood Street.
VFW Parkway.
Right on the Parkway, so you can see these, these homes that we showed you, right, right on the Parkway, West Roxbury.
I think, all right. Is there any members of the public vote to speak at this point? Any questions? I'm sorry, yes, could you state, state your name and, you know, stay right there, you're fine, just stay. You don't need to stand up, they're fine.
Hello. I'm in a bar from the Bay Road side, and there's another one here, and friends. I'm concerned, will, I'm lower than this project is. I'm concerned about their water, taking our water, that we have wells, I'm concerned about their sewage coming into our water supplies, because it's a hill, and we're at the back of that hill. I'm concerned about, what else might I...
Fire protection.
Oh, yeah, fire protection. About, they won't have water, right? I mean, it's like if there's a fire, I don't think they're gonna be protected.
Okay, just one thing before I say anything else, could you state your name and your address, please?
I'm sorry, Kathleen Buckley, 1986 Bay Road, Stoughton.
Thank you, okay. Those, those comments are really good questions, and we, they have not fully developed all of their plans at this point, that was what the engineer was saying, so until those are developed, it's difficult for anybody to answer how, how you're gonna deal with your drainage or your sewage at that point in time, until some of those plans are developed.
And I mean, I think the idea of a group sewage and water system is great, but when people leave and come and go, how's that gonna affect the people who come on when there's a problem, they're not gonna wanna pay for it? If it's somebody else's...
That's gonna have, that's gonna be technically in their homeowners association and their operation and maintenance programs that they use.
Gotta be covered.
Mm-hmm.
I guess that's it, it's basically that I'm worried about my own water supply, and that of the, there's three of us on a private way, plus the people right on Jordan Drive, and on the first houses of Bay Road on the main road, I'm back, you know, in a private way. Now, there's probably, what, 10 homes there? I figured there's like 10 homes that are gonna be affected negatively by this. That's just my opinion, my observation.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it.
So, anybody else would like to speak? Yes, Mr. Zemanian.
For the record, Mark Zemanian, 500 Avenue. I just want to commend the applicant. I understand this is conceptual at this point, but if we can actually put together a project like this in Stoughton that makes sense for our engineers, Tom Planner, and this board, I'm very much in favor of this, and I commend your efforts to bring this forward.
Anybody else at this time?
Mr. Chairman, there's somebody online, a Tara Orguettes?
Actually, I'm a husband, Chris Orguetta, 60 Eagle Rock Road.
Yes, sir.
I just had a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I am in the construction industry, so I get the process, and I have no doubt that these houses will be of highest quality, or, you know, I don't doubt that at all. I just have a few concerns on the construction impact, because we have construction, I think it's six or four Phoenix Lane at the time, present time, and the construction process of that leaves a lot of debris and garbage in the streets. The general contractor is not there all the time, we as a neighborhood have to, I know myself and other people, you know, when walking around the neighborhood, we're picking up debris from that construction, whether it be inadvertent, some workers park up and down Phoenix Lane and just discard their lunch material anywhere. So, that's one thing I have concern about, is just, in order to get construction, there is a good amount of destruction to get to construction. That's one concern I, I had. I had another concern about, and I don't know if I heard this correctly, but it sounded like you were building a road through a wetland. Now, I just, I didn't know if I understood that correctly, but I didn't know how that was, one, possible, two, it wasn't over, it was through a wetland, so you're, you're negating the wetland fact, whether you're moving it or whatnot, but I just didn't know if I heard that correctly. And then, what else? I had one other thing, one other note I had, it was just, it looked like they did some perp tests to Lot 7 and 8, and then they were gonna have that community sewage at Lot 7 and 8, but Lot 7 and 8, the backside of Lot 7 and 8, I didn't note on the topo map on how it was gonna run down, but that, a butt's wetland, so you're gonna have all that sewage go into a wetland? I didn't understand that either, so that was, that was the three things that I had noted during the, during the presentation, so thank you for your time.
Could anybody from the team do so?
Mr. Chair, through you. So, the, I don't know if a visual might be helpful.
Go ahead, which one would you like up?
Yeah, I think sheet C4A would probably be the best one. And once we have that visual, I'll, I'll try to do my best to interpret the question and give a, an answer. So, on this sheet here, as you follow the road as it takes its turn to the north, right, right there, there is a small, it's four, it took four flags to flag it, it's technically an isolated wetland, it was actually your conservation agent picked it up in the field with our environmental specialist, and they flagged it, it's four, it's four flags. With the grading and everything that we're doing for construction, we're going to fill that small, isolated wetland, and that's why we're replicating in the back. I just can't, we have the area on the plan, I think, I just can't read it. Again, apologies for not having larger, but again, it's, it's less than, you know, it's single hundred square feet. It's not what someone thinks of as like a large pond wetland, so on and so...
Right, so your road's not crossing, but you're infilling an area that is going to be, and then that you replicate in those areas outside, okay?
Correct, and then, the other question, I, yeah, the septics, if we probably go to the next sheet, it's 4B, the, the septic is in and around lots...
Do you want to bring up that septic?
Yeah, actually, if he has it, do you have this?
At the end of the roadie package is that septic sketch, if you could pull that up, please.
Yeah, sorry, we probably could have done it with both, we probably could have done both with that one, but I apologize for not...
Last page.
So, those lot numbers are, I believe, five and six, and that, that box that's shown, right where your cursor is, is actually the, the rough sketch area of what the community septic field would look like, and those are the, the four cross-hatched bullseyes are where we, we did the, the testing, so you can see we've got some area to work with. You could also notice that we are well outside of both 100-foot buffers, both to the plan right and plan left, and there are no wetlands.
No, no, I think, I think when you first described it, you, you might have had your cursor somewhere else, so maybe I misinterpreted that, that's where I got Lot 7 and 8, so I do see that now, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
I think those were the two questions.
Those are the two questions, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Yes, Mr. Mullin?
Bob Mullin, 19 Global Lane. I just want to make a comment, and I agree with the town planner, that if the roadway is not up to the specs for the town, there should probably, should be in the home association agreement that it stays as a private way, because otherwise, you're gonna have problems having town meeting accept it as a public way. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not speaking for town meeting, but that usually comes up at town meeting.
I know.
If, if, Mr. Chairman, if I could just respond briefly to, to Mr. Mullin's comment and... If, Mr. Chairman, if I could just respond briefly to Mr. Mullin's comment, and Bill, correct me if I misstate your position, I don't think he was saying that the roadway would not be up to town specifications. I think Bill's concern, you know, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, was more relative to the idea of the town assuming the responsibility for the community septic system. It was not that the roadway would not be.
I think he stated drainage.
It's the drainage of the roadway, the underground drainage and the community septic. You know, obviously, the, you're wanting a waiver width, which I don't, you know, I think, you know, we pave too much of the world anyway, just like our last project, but the, and the cross-section and, you know, those sorts of things, you're going to meet our standard, you know, you're going to meet the two inches and then the inch and a half binder, you're going to meet all of that. My really big concern is these underground drainage systems and a community septic system, and, and I'm still going to hammer, and obviously, I don't have a vote in this, and I'm just, I'm paid to give my best professional advice, and that's what I do, is is that in 10 or 15 years, you know, when the maintenance cost is, will be expensive to, you know, to, you know, get to the next life cycle of this, you know, you always, everyone's like, well, I pay taxes, why can't I, you know, have the town plow it? Why can't I, you know, that question, and it's hard, it's hard to answer, and like, well, they're providing a drainage system that the town cannot afford to, nor has the skill and expertise to maintain. The reason why we require the open drainage is is because, as I said, we have weed whackers, we have lawn mowers, and guess what? In 20 or 30 years, we're still going to have guys that can operate a lawnmower and a weed whacker. It might be electric, but we can still do it, and, but we don't have the resources, you know, I would hate to go to town meeting and say, oh, well, it won't happen while, you know, they won't fail, I'll be retired before they fail, but the next person goes to town meeting and says, oh, you know, we need $65,000 to put new Coltex in because they've, because we didn't sweep the streets well enough, and they've clogged.
Thank you, Bill.
Sorry.
I'm assuming you're going to ask for a continuance.
Yeah, so, so, Mr. Chairman, similar to the last case, and as was alluded to, we are also before the Conservation Commission, we'll be back before them next week, assuming you still do have room on your December 14th meeting agenda, we would like to be continued to December 14th. I see, I see the town planner is nodding his head in agreement, so.
No. No, we don't.
We don't. I have two applications that were just submitted, I believe. I have.
What do we?
First meeting is in January.
Yeah.
And usually I use that as a zoning meeting, so.
11th, I think.
Yeah, I haven't even discussed that yet, but that's normally a zoning meeting for me.
Oh, we're definitely, by the way, we're having at least two zoning amendments on that meeting.
So if that's a zoning meeting, then just go to the next meeting.
Really? You're talking January 25th?
Barry, I don't put the holidays into the schedule, I'm sorry.
I understand.
You applied this time of the year.
I understand, but.
It's only two meetings, we really.
What's the issue with January 11th?
Well, he's got zoning amendments, and we, I normally take the first meeting of the year as a zoning, we set up the zoning to deal with the zoning articles that we have to, and taking into account of a project this size is going to take away from the amount of time that we need to put in dealing going zoning forward, and we have timeframes, we have to hit the town meeting.
Yeah, and we have, we have two zoning amendments that we'll be, that we'll be submitting, and one of them is a, will take quite a while because it's going to be creating an entirely new industrial zone for Campanelli, and I guarantee you that that's going to be quite time-consuming. And I think that, I think that the 25th of January is reasonable, because I believe that you're going to have a fair amount of time to sit and talk with Craig and myself regarding the engineering and the drainage. I guarantee, Thanksgiving's in between all of this.
I understand. Now, we, we talked yesterday or the day before, we realized this time of year is tough because you're down to one meeting a month in November and December, and so if it has to be January 25th, it has to be January 25th.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Peter did have one question before we finish up.
Actually, when we talked about town services, you know, this development here, it will be a private road, but I'm sure you'll be expecting trash pickup and actually school bus service if need be down that area? Those are two things you may want to look into. Again, that's.
We can do that.
Next meeting, I'll be bringing that up.
Sure.
Thank you.
And before I close, I do want to apologize to you, Mr. Crimmins, that is a very lovely sign at Cobb's Corner.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Did I hear that there was no water line shown or brought down on here? Because as far as I know, they have to bring a water line into a development for fire hydrants anyway.
We discussed this, this issue with Chief Carroll a couple of months ago, but Mike, you want to?
Well, yeah, sure. So, yes, we did, we did have a conversation with the chief, and he was not, I don't want to put words in his mouth, and it was a little while ago, but basically, he said he's not worried about us bringing a water line in because he would bring, remind me, Barry, was it pump trucks or? Yeah, he, he just said, don't worry about it, because we're going to, and Dimitri again, to just say, jump in if I say anything wrong, we're looking for individual well services for each of these houses as the water supply, because there actually isn't any water to tie into anywhere nearby, so we'd be looking at hundreds of linear feet of main just to get to this property. So we did.
So Eagle Rock Drive doesn't exist with water right now?
No.
So there's nothing there?
Yeah. There's no public water. Right. So once we figured that out, that's one of the first things we brought to the fire chief, and he said, don't worry about my fire suppression, I can handle that because I have subdivisions that are like that already, figure out your water supply. So that's where we're at.
Can we have a motion to accept our request for continuance, please?
Motion to accept the continuance through January 25th.
25th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Item number five, deliberations on site plan review decision for Halloran Park, Stoughton Recreation Department, Harrison Ridge Streets, votes may be taken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a set of findings and conditions. I will highlight, there's the one condition that you specifically wanted that I had to add, and that would be condition number, special condition number four. The applicant shall make best efforts to fund within the existing project budget security cameras for the new courts. Should there be no funds available within the project budget, the applicant shall request funding through the budget process for security cameras. So, you know, because he doesn't have the funds for them, but he can look at requesting, you know, if, if he has extra money at the end of the job, that could go towards that, or he needs to just request it through the budget process. And I believe that is the essence of what you want.
Yeah, correct. So anybody have any questions on the way this?
And I believe Matt is on, Matt is online.
No.
Okay. Then can I have a motion to accept the site plan approval with the conditions as they are written?
So made.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Will we be signing this tonight, Bill?
Yes.
I have it right here.
Okay.
Item number six, extension request for 1580 Turnpike Street Site Plan, SP 20-005 and Special Permit, SPP 21-08, applicant Titanium Group, votes may be taken. So this is the gas station at the corner of Page Street and Turnpike Street. I expressed my concerns earlier about trying to make this extension. Does anybody want to speak to this? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Mike Corry, Madoff and Corry in Foxborough, representing the applicant's Titanium Group and Stoughton Gas Group. Two years ago tonight, this board voted to approve a site plan approval order and special permits. That, that order went to, went to the town clerk as of November 15th, and it became final as of December 5. Prior to that, the entry of that order, and while we were going through all of our discussions, we had several meetings on it, and well after, we were trying to coordinate contractors, get supplies in, but because of COVID, and, and after COVID, the, the impact of the disease itself, the supply chain problems, we were having really, real big problems in getting folks booked and materials in. For example, in March of 2021, we ordered new gas tanks to be delivered. It took until December of 2022 for them to be delivered. That's how long that process was. But over the course of, after entry of the order, over the course of 2022 in particular, the property was shut down, about $250,000 was spent in preparation for it. They just couldn't commit, they couldn't get contractors to commit to working on it until they got the supplies, they were not at the materials in, so they were having trouble. And then, once the, once the materials became available again, contractors were saying, well, we're booked out. We, we are now, depending on when the two years expires on this order, we're either at the 15th or December 5, and we're ready, we are in the process of putting together an application for a building permit, and we're ready to go. But we wanted to come here to either ask the board to consider, in November, November 7, my, my letter of November 7 supplemented the original request, that outlined the numerous items that the applicant had done in preparation. We'd either like this board's input on whether substantial use or effort with regard to the permits been, permit and site plan approval have been undertaken such that an extension isn't necessary, or grant an extension to allow for, for the building permit.
And I, and I made a statement that I'm concerned about it, because my concern is that the site's been sitting, and we have this happening in at least one other major site in town and a couple of the smaller sites, and this whole thing of extensions is becoming a problem, as far as I'm concerned in town, and these projects are sitting. I also see a for sale sign in front of the property, so that tells me that the applicant's looking to sell this property at that certain time, so I'm just trying to figure out what's going on.
Right.
And so if we're selling the property, or are we going to apply for a permit and build the property, that's really what I'm trying to figure out.
Sure. The, the application for the building permit will be submitted very shortly, and it may be sold, it may not be, but we want to get the work underway and the, and the authorizations, essentially keeping these, the substantial work that we put in on these permits alive.
Right, but is it, that doesn't tell me you're going to apply for the permit, it doesn't tell me a schedule when you're going to build the project.
My, my client is here, may I ask him to step up? Can you? Ron and Rory.
Good evening, Ron and Rory, Prestige Car Wash, Prestige Gas, so I can answer any questions you have.
Yeah, so I'm trying to figure out a schedule that you're actually going to try to build the building.
So basically, right now, the moment we'll get the building permit, we will start. So the contract is ready to start. We had major delays with getting all the compartments, such as delivering the gas tanks, canopies.
You know, he explained that, so I'm just trying to know, I just wanted to, he says you're going to apply for the building permit, so is that next week, next month, next year, or what is that?
No, so basically, the contractor is the one that is going to apply for the permit and start the project right away. So he's ready right now to pull the trigger. We hired him, and I talked to Mike previously, and he's ready to file for the building permit. So basically, we're going to fill up the building permit the moment that you will give us the extension. Once we get a building permit, we're going to start digging. So we're not, there is no more delay, the tanks are on site, ready to be digging and ready to be built, so just.
I just, I'm just trying to assure that somehow, assure that the project's going to get built. Like I say, I see a for sale sign in front, I see the project sitting, it just, to me, it just, it's another blade on the town right now, and it's kind of like right at the entrance of the town.
I'll tell you something, I'm embarrassed. That's all I can say. You know, I'm embarrassed to have the sign there, and the site became such an eyesore because we couldn't start. We did disconnect the power, we went to the gas, we did it all to start demoing it, and then we couldn't get anything done because we couldn't get any supplies. We really fell between project that was horrible timing-wise.
And, Mr. Chair, this, this delay is causing Ronan substantial costs.
I'm sure there's a lot of money involved, I don't disagree, but we've got projects that are even larger than his, that there's people sitting, and they keep on spending money, and I don't understand it, but I just want to figure out all this.
No, understood. These, these deadlines are imposed, you know, I'm, I'm on the zoning board in my town, these deadlines are imposed for a reason, you don't want to let these permits just sit while people, this isn't that situation. Ronan and his brothers have been killing themselves trying to get this thing up and running. At first, it was COVID, then there were the supply chain delays, then the, then the contractors were so booked up, well, I'll put you off until whenever, sorry.
I can definitely say something, it was not a money issue from our side to pull the trigger to do the job. It was always something else that was out of our control, and that's why it was kept delaying, and obviously, it cost us money to, we didn't, we did not have to shut it down, we could have still operated the station until the last day and keep it going.
You could have.
We shut it down because we were ready to build, and then all of a sudden, nothing got delivered to us, all the promises in the world came in, and just, there was nothing there, it was just, it turned into a huge nightmare for us, but like I said, money-wise, we were not even counting on a bank to start the project. It was just, there was nothing there to start digging a hole and have no tank, and then the tanks said, okay, we'll deliver the tank, but then there was no pump, then there was no pump, there was no canopy, then there was no canopy. It was just turned, like I said, into, and then when everything was really kind of ready to go, there was no contractor. It was unbelievable, just really become a real struggle, so.
Any questions?
Do you have a contract, a contractor set up ready to go, is what you're saying, correct?
Yes, the guy that did.
Okay.
Sorry.
What I want to do is just try to make it simple. You have a contractor set up, so in other words, within three months, those tanks should be buried in the ground. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
So, so if we give a continuance, could we say the permit has to be submitted within the next 30 days?
Well, okay, the, I don't know, we can't, we can't continue on the building permit. All we could, all we really can do is extend our permit for a year, is to give them a year.
It's our intention, Mr. Chair.
No, I understand.
Get that off the table. Within the next 30 days. The process often takes longer.
No, I realize that.
Yeah, thanks.
A copy of the contract would have made things much easier tonight, that you have the contractor, you signed with them, you know, that would have made things much easier. I'd like to see the site, we went through a lot with you with the design, it came out with a great design, everything was, you know, we all felt good about it, wanted to, this was going to be nice in that area, you know, the whole nine yards, and you'd really like to see it get moving, you know?
We spent tremendous amount of money to get to that finish line, and like I said, you were guys involved in it, tremendous amount of money to get there, back and forth, it took us years to get it approved, and then when we were ready for it, we just couldn't build it. So I can tell you, I mean, we're ready to build it, we have the, we're ready for, to get your extension, so we will, the moment we get the extension, we will apply.
Okay.
That's really what it's coming down to.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to extend this for one more year.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we will not disappoint you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to take your word.
You will?
You will see it, Bill. I mean, we are, we are local, we're right down the street, you know, headquarters is right.
I want a free car wash.
Anything you guys want, you know?
Item number seven, lot release, Ledger Brook 2 subdivision, lot.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
38 Freely Drive, votes may be taken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The owners are, were the original owners that built the house. The subdivision's been approved and accepted many years ago, and they can, their title attorney can find no covenant release, and so this is, as you know, we, we see these every now and then, and I have nothing in the files that show any covenant releases on this. I did a little research at the registry, so I have the covenant release ready to, for lot 3780 Freely Drive.
Is this the only one that's, that's left without this lot release, or do you know? Is there any way of knowing that without doing a huge research?
I have no idea. I almost, I almost wrote this to release all the lots, but, you know, if somebody else comes to sell on this, the next one I will, I'll, I'll schedule, I'll, I'll type it that they're all released.
Okay.
This is, they're trying to, they have a closing next week.
Can I have a motion to release lot 3748 Freely Drive?
So made.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mike? Can we actually vote on this?
General business with the meeting minutes, which we'll get to in a minute. The SRA, when they did their urban renewal presentation to us, talked about putting together a subcommittee, and it's going to include two planning board members. I think the next, or the meeting they've set up for is November 20th, for their first meeting, if I remember correctly.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's November 20th at 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock.
At 7 Pearl Street, across, at their, at their office.
So I would like to know if any members either would volunteer or that we can nominate to be able to take that. Due to my schedule and what's going on, I, I would like to be on that committee, but I'm not going to be able to spend the time right that I need.
Same here, I'm too busy myself. I think Rich was just.
Rock, paper, scissors? No, so Rich, Rich is, Rich is on, but I'm not sure if he can hear us. I do know that.
I can hear you.
Rich, would you be interested in being on this SRA, the Urban Renewal Committee, Subcommittee?
I'll, I'll join it.
How, how long does this committee expect it to be in, exist?
I honestly don't know. I mean, I'm assuming until they get the urban renewal plan approved. Is that the?
I, I think the committee is talking about how to, once it gets approved, on, on how they can, the redevelopment authorities looking at trying to, you know, make this an, an open, transparent, and.
So they want an ongoing committee?
I think, I think it's ongoing as needed, but it's to, it's to work on how to start implementing it.
So that's the renewal plan that we approved of? That we did, right, but it's going to get approved with the, with the select board. There's several other steps that they have to go through before final approval of that plan is done. So what this committee is going to do is first off, working on that part of it, Rich, and then the next part of it, as they, as it's been approved, is how it gets actually implemented. So they want to have an open process and have several, not just the planning board, but select board, and I think there was, I don't know, the CONCON, CONCON wouldn't have been involved, but I'm not sure who else was involved, maybe it was just the town administrators, yeah. You, so those being on that board, so I'd like to, Paul said he would be okay with it, I just want to know if you'd, if you're looking to, if you could be on that board also.
I'm going to have to say no.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Richard?
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, Paul, could you nominate both the, Paul and Richard?
Yes, nominate Paul and Ri, Richard. Paul not being me.
Peter, I'm sorry, Peter, Paul and Peter. Yeah, Richard.
We did rock, paper, scissors.
I'll second that.
Richard, could you second that, please?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the, oh, one other item, and maybe it's just something you and I need to discuss afterwards, but I sent you an email about that Framingham checklist for future Dover amendments, and I'm just.
I figured.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
I figured that was something later.
Yeah, it was just something I'd like to be able to have set up, we can have in the future, so we don't have this type of thing, so that's all. All right, then the only other item is to approve the meeting minutes.
I read them. I, I read through them too, I don't have any issue.
I take a motion then.
Motion to approve the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You.
So the biggest decision of the night, can I have a motion to?
Make a motion to adjourn?[1779.22]